Find us this time together, Lord. Lord, I ask you that you would be with our country, Lord, as we're going through this situation. I'd ask you that you would be with our state and also our local leaders. Lord, I ask you that you would give us the knowledge and the understanding that we need to be able to make decisions to keep our citizens safe. Lord, thank you for what you've given us. We ask that you be with the ones that are sick and in the hospital. In the name of prayer, amen. The call Alderman James.
President.
Alderman Nash. Alderman Henderlager.
Yes.
Alderman Steelman.
Here.
I am present, City Administrator Walden.
Present.
City Clerk Capel.
Present.
City Attorney Weber.
Present.
Public Works Director Nash.
Present.
Chief of Police Chases.
Present.
Economics Development Director Burridge.
She says, "Present by text."
All right, at this time, we have no area of persons, so the next item on the agenda is under bids. We have bids for 2020 street projects. Mr. Nash, can you introduce those bids, please?
You can see, you got the proposals before you. Just depending on, there are certain streets that we're not going to be able to do the Nova Chip on due to the weight of the machine. We tear the streets up, some of them that we have. So there are some streets that we're going to have to chip and seal. We don't have a choice on. We're still looking to do the Park Street project to get it finished with the way things are right now. It's going to be, we may get real close to being in the next fiscal year before we can even get the Park Street project started just because of the way things are. But we will get it done this summer. But the weather, the way it is, with all being wet, that asphalt has to be really dry. We have to make sure everything's dry. And I talked to Gary about this today. The more Nova Chip, the more we buy, the cheaper it is. That makes sense to me, you get a better bang for your buck. Gary's thoughts were, on some of these projects that we were going to Nova Chip, wait till after the new budget year, till after the budget. Start it in January or July 1st. We can take the money from this year's budget, put it with the budget money for next year, and get more bang for our buck on Nova Chip. But bear in mind, there are some streets that we're not going to be able to Nova Chip. Gary says we need to, there needs to be a couple more layers of the chip and seal put on it over the years for it to be able to have a good enough base to withstand the weight of that machine. The last time they tried it, they dumped with that machine and tore a street up. And they had to dig the street all out, dig it down about four foot, put rock back in it. Let it all settle back in, and they ended up having to chip and seal on anyway. So we don't want to put that machine on some of these streets. But there's a list. If you look at the list that we got, even though it shows the chip and, or Nova Chip on all these streets, bear in mind, Gary wanted you to see what it would cost versus chip and seal or Nova Chip on every project. But just bear in mind, there's a good portion of these projects that we can Nova Chip on.
So what we had budgeted for street maintenance in this year's budget was $200,000. And year to date, we spent $12,940. And this is from the special street fund, so it doesn't go away if you don't spend it, you know. It does carry. And the primary input to that fund is called the cart tax. It's a gas fuel tax and a little bit of vehicle license fee in there, but mostly gas tax money.
This is also money that, it's not like it can be transferred to something else.
Correct, we cannot use this for the sewer plant or for paying any other, it's got to be used for streets.
Well, I can make it come in. We've been promising people on Park Street, you know, for about four years.
And Kenny, we're going to get it done. It's just that with the corrupt, with the virus going on and all the moisture we've had this spring, we've got to wait till that base dries out. But it's already, we've already got it. That is one project that we're going to get done because, like you said, these people have been promising, and it's going to be done.
It should be the first one, huh?
It will be, but we've got to make sure.
No matter what the term, it don't matter.
They will.
Yeah, of course.
Yeah, they'll make sure that everything is, from what Gary explained means, with that machine goes on this road. But no, you're right, Kenny, the Park Street project is the one that for sure we got.
Well, you know, I've been told, I tell the people what I'm going to tell them, and I represent the people, I think as well as I can. It's terrible to tell people this this long, and I've been done. It's working when you grow it off the top. You just can't let it get bad on you. You can't just keep taking these sheets, you got it? That's all I'm saying.
Do you last time you say you have chip and seal or Nova Chip or not next to them? Is that what the streets currently did or recommendation that what it was?
If you look back on your other sheets, that's just what he wrote. Yeah, some of those are Nova Chip.
Like the handwriting part, what they kind of draw down here?
And what he would do is, he would go back and look at those streets, just see exactly how good they are as to whether we can do that again. And if there's some of the chip and seal roads that haven't did enough base, maybe we'll do it on them. But you know, you just got to make sure that that base is good on those roads that we have before we do anything. And just bear in mind, we're going to get, I mean, if we're able to buy more, we can go farther. But it still have as much Nova Chip as it is chip and seal.
That's what Walden, you have any good thoughts?
Yeah, the Nova Chip will last quite a bit longer. Gary said they've had really, I can't tell you how many years, because Gary didn't say, he just said they've had really good luck with it. And he said the Nova, the chip and seal does pretty good just because it's on side streets. So you don't have a lot of truck traffic or anything on your side streets. So it comes up pretty good.
Thing along when you say money by using Nova, because the chip and seal, you go down some of the country roads, they start using it and then it went all out of the ditch. It don't stay on the road.
But you're right.
He gets a problem, he get more problem than the chip and seal too.
And he don't take care of the problem, you know, it's not a good.
It is a better material, and you will get more longevity out of it. But just bear in mind the cost on the streets that we can and can't put it on yet.
We haven't been doing anything, guys, that's why we're down the hole. Makes no argument, we haven't done anything. So we say here, those people are going to do it this year, going to do it this, and now they ain't going to trust us again. I'd like to get my word out, I'd like to see that, I'm, who's got to do the thing.
The one street that we were going to do last year was the Park Street project. And because of the work that had to be done, the lines that had to be put in in the street, you couldn't do it, it had to suck. So that's why we had to do, with that street, we'll get it. But everything is settled, everything ready, all conditioned.
So can you foresee what your recommendation, what Gary's recommendation was, to do the Nova Chip and the State of the Rec?
If we do, if, we're probably, we're probably not going to meet the timeframe on the Nova Chip on Park Street to get it done in this budget year because of all the rain we've had and with the virus thing going on. It's not going to happen. But after July 1st, Gary's thoughts were, if we took up the money that we're not going to use in this year's budget, put it together with next year's budget money, if that's possible, we can buy more Nova Chip. The more we buy, the cheaper it is. And maybe we can do a few, another street or two with the Nova Chip. We're still going to have to do chip and seal, you're not going to, unless you want to just do Nova Chip on every street we can. And you're going to get maybe half the amount of streets done that you would put the chip and seal on. And just bear in mind, some of the streets, we still can't Nova Chip.
Mark, what's your experience with it? How much longer will it, Nova Chip last in this spread rule? Black, how long does it last?
Gary said it'll last double. And it may last longer than that if you keep truck driving all the way. You know what I'm saying, you know, the weight of these trucks? Some of these trucks, I followed the traffic, traveled through town the other day, there was a guy going Google, and he was, he was on every town, and he was on every street on that side of town trying to get into US speeds.
Would it, would it be more, would it be possible to get a more fair view of what streets can actually, what the cost of Nova Chip would be to do the streets that can actually handle it? And the cost of, does that make sense? Instead of, instead of giving us a price on a street for Nova Chip and chip and seal that can't even have Nova Chip?
We'll be bringing back a list of the streets that we can do Nova Chip on and the price is going to be?
That would support, yeah, the streets that would support Nova Chip, that they know what that cost would be. And then the ones that have to have chip and seal, just tell us what that's going to cost to do the chip and seal on those. Okay.
I, I, it's like three secret scenarios. One, for everything you have that can do Nova Chip. One that demands Nova Chip, so where you have to have it to make the street perform, and then once all the chip and seal.
You have the Nova Chip, and if you want to go through the cipher, you've got what the Nova Chip's going to cost versus the chip and seal on every one of those streets.
But not everyone uses the manual Nova Chip.
Correct, that's right.
I will, I will give a list of the streets. I will talk to Gary in the morning, and I'll have him to give me a list of the streets that we want to do nothing, that we can do nothing with Nova Chip on, and the price per street of the Nova Chip. And I will have him to prioritize those, okay? And we'll go from there, and then I'll bring it back to you.
And a list of streets that will only be able to do chip and seal?
Yes.
Because I want to, I want to get away from doing chip and seal on every road possible. Because I don't think I've ever gotten more complaints than the last time we did chip and seal. You know? Can I understand what you mean structurally? If something, if you need Nova Chip, then we just have to keep doing chip and seal a couple more times until it even sees it?
Till we get the base built.
Right. Okay, but yeah, I just would like to, I'd like to lean towards Nova Chip, where it would be, but, right?
Okay, and we'll prioritize the streets.
Okay, yeah, thank you.
Are these bids going to still be good by next week?
Yes. Yeah, they, what Gary, Gary talked on the night, so they just stand by.
Okay.
Anytime, good.
So, Harry, do we need a motion to postpone the bids, or can we just postpone?
I could say a motion to postpone.
I'll make a motion, we postpone the bids.
I got a motion and a second, any further discussion? Harry, now the call for the vote, Alderman Steelman.
Yes.
Alderman Henderlager.
Yes.
Alderman Nash.
Good.
Alderman James. Next item on the agenda is going to be the consent agenda. Need a motion, a second on the consent agenda, please.
Can you make a motion, we approve the consent agenda?
Second. And a second, any discussion? Harry, now the call for the vote, Alderman Henderlager.
Yes.
Alderman James.
Yes.
Alderman Steelman.
Yes.
Alderman Nash.
Good.
Next item on the agenda is under reports of city official boards and committees. Mr. Brown, you're up, sir.
Why can't voting committee at six o'clock to discuss a request for waiver to allow parking in the 30-foot front setback of a development? And we had a motion recommended, Lord Alderman, that the existing requirement for one parking space for a two-bedroom behind a 30-foot setback, R1, 2, and 3, only apply to plants accepted after the enactment of this ordinance. And the vote was taken, and two yeses and four noes. Mainly to send this request to the planning consulting board of adjustment and let them decide about that. So that is the report. Have any questions?
After, we've not done anything with the board of adjustments since I have been here, that I'm, that I'm aware of. They're going to be mad, by the way. I know they don't have very many meetings, if any at all.
After that, after that goes through them, if they decide to approve that, then does that recommendation come to the Alderman for approval?
No, I think they have a final say.
Okay.
I'm correct. I think that's the way, the board of adjustment have the final say. And if they don't, then Mr. Brown just not like, or they just, then the next step is to go to court.
Okay.
And the board of adjustment doesn't change the ordinance, they just allow his case.
I think it's according to, what's the wording?
According to the ordinance for the board of adjustment, the judge will look at where this other specific powers. It lays out that they can hear requests of variances to the literal provisions of these ordinances. And since this was strict enforcement of the zoning ordinance, it possibly hardship. And due to circumstances, you need to, the department of consideration, right, such variances, only when someone's raised such objection, we keep the spirit of change positions. For the zoning ordinance, so, they definitely determine variables on request.
Does that have to do hardship? To make him stay with what he was?
That don't happen very often, but I'm.
No, we don't handle very often.
I think that's everything.
And there are some of the patients on, on the variance that they were having. But that's all set up in the ordinance, or five, six.
Any other questions for Mr. Brown?
Yeah, I had that piece of paper, I motion down before the vote.
All right, thank you, sir. Mr. Walden, you're up.
Mr. Mayor, members of the Board of Alderman. Main topic I wanted to touch on in my report tonight is concerns of the city's response to the COVID-19 pandemic and the governor's recent stay-at-home order. Since the coronavirus began affecting Missouri, myself and other city staff have been in regular communication with the Dade County Health Center, Dade County Emergency Management, Dade County Commissioners, along with various state agencies related to public health and economic development. As conditions warranted, we've adopted how we operate and have communicated aspects of those changes that affect the public. While some cities may not have taken all the actions we've done, and some have taken more, we strive for a balance that continues to offering their services to our citizens while limiting the exposure of COVID-19 to both our citizens and employees. Though the COVID-19 pandemic has changed how we do some of our work, staff have been flexible and responsive to the changes we've made to continue operations. One of the important projects that continues is the AMI project involving the replacement of all of our electric and water meters. As mentioned in the recent press release, the next utility bills are expected to be processed by the end of this week and will reflect a typical 30-day consumption cycle from mid-December to mid-January. Though penalties are not being assessed during the COVID-19 declared emergency, the bills will have a listed penalty date of May 1, 2020. Bills paid by April 20th, 2020 will be eligible for the 1% discount on the electric portion of the bill. The payments of account setup for auto payment will be processed April 20th, 2020. Beginning with the main bill, all of our electric meters and most of our water meters will be read using the new AMI system. There was a shipment delay of approximately 250 water meter modules. Thus, those will continue to be read manually until they're replaced. While the new system will allow us to pull reads anytime, we will select intervals that balance catching up on the lag from usage to billing, but in a way that does not represent a new burden to our customers, especially while the COVID-19 pandemic continues. Couple of other things I would mention with the governor's stay-at-home order and consultation with Mayor Nash. We are counseling the spring community-wide yard sale. That's been, will be in a press release going out tomorrow. Individuals choosing to have their own yard sales would need to comply with the distance, social distancing guidelines and group sizes of thin or less. But we will not be renting bots behind the city admin building due to not being able to control the crowd size and distance and so forth. And so that announcement will be made tomorrow. There's been various postings from Parks and Rec on their programs, and would ask folks to go to the Facebook page for current information on that. And we'll see how we perceive. Our next big public event would be the July 4th fireworks. And hopefully, we'll be on the other side of this by then. We're working on getting bids for fireworks. And so you may remember, one year, we had purchased our fireworks, but due to dry conditions, we weren't able to hold fireworks that year. And we were able to store them for a year and without harm. I think, you know, under the right conditions, they can be stored. But, you know, we'll, we'll bring those bids to you and the latest information we can, and proceed from there. One other announcement I would, our point of information I would mention is our, the contractor that was awarded the Tapp Sidewalk project. It's on the project. They're able to do their work within the guidelines for essential workers, and construction is considered essential. And so if you're over by the armory, you'll see that they've, they've started. And it's actually, we wouldn't have asked for it to be, to come this way, but with Parks and Rec programs being on hold and nothing taking place at the park, it's actually allowed them to start on that end first. And they expect to be done with that portion of the project before we're out of the pandemic situation. So, but anyway, that's my report, unless there are questions.
Any questions for Mr. Walden?
When, when will the next utility deal be moved out? What section will they get? I'm not getting a lot of call.
They'll be out this week, Alderman Nash, and they will represent the period December 15th, January 15th. Not all meters are read on the exact same day, so that's a, you know, but it's approximately 30 days. And so beginning with the next bill, we'll be able to pull those reads mostly through the AMI system, all but about 250 or so water meters. That even though we'll have to read those manually, since that's a much smaller number than what we normally read, we expect to read those maybe even on one day. So we may have all the bills read, you know, all, all the meters read on the same day.
But people are going to be getting a bill within the week.
They'll, they'll go out by the, around the end of this week. They should have them by, would you say, March Wednesday of next week?
Yes. Or, or she's been working on, her and the girls are never going to hammer them out today.
Are you going to discuss the RFP as well?
Yes, so the next item, if you look up on the screen, this is a program offered through the Missouri, through the state of Missouri for schools, cities, and so forth, certain entities can make improvements that save energy. And the state provides a funding mechanism where it's, on the surface, it's like a low-interest loan, but it's a guaranteed one in that if the energy savings aren't met, the contractor's on the hook. And so they do due diligence in looking at what programs they approve. If you look on the webpage here, Drew, can you see the screen I got up?
Yes, okay.
And with us is Drew with McKinstry. That, that's the response that we're presenting to you tonight. The loan program has, or the program has an application date of April 17th. So we were literally getting our RFP out, but it was out for two weeks. It was picked up by Dodge and some of the lead referrals, we did get some inquiries. We had one response from McKinstry, and that's what's presented in your packet. Just for information, on the lower part of the screen here, it's a little faint, but you can see some of the prior awardees that have taken advantage of this. Locally, we have Oak Hill R1 School District did some lighting upgrades. Their award amount was 63,500. The Salem R80 School District did some lighting upgrades. Their about was 250,000 and change. And so the premise is, you secure the funding to do these upgrades, and then you realize the energy savings. And then those energy savings pay back the loan. And if those energy savings aren't realized, then, you know, we're not held liable for that. And so it's about as no risk as you can do those improvements. As we stand, we have four buildings that have different degrees of facility needs. This building, the city admin building, the armory, the older aspects of the armory that haven't been updated, and then our police station. So it would be our intent, if you're agreeable, to have all four of those buildings analyzed for lighting and heating and cooling opportunities to save energy. The agreement with McKinstry would be for them to do the analysis and the application to do this program through the state. If we bring that back and you elect not to do it, then the agreement would provide, we would be out 7,500 dollars to walk away from it. If we decide to pursue it, then that 7,500 dollars gets rolled into funds funded, and then it would just be paid back with the savings. And Drew, if I would mischaracterize that, or if you want to expand on that, please go ahead.
Yeah, I think, you know, you hit it spot on. Just to fill in a couple more things, we're looking at, you know, some of those references on who's utilized those programs. The bottom two, bottom two customers are McKinstry's, Oak Hill R1 and Salem R80 School District. We've worked about 12 phases of work with the school district down the road. So we're very familiar with the area, we're very familiar utilizing this approach. And, you know, as Mr. Walden said, it's, you know, if you have the opportunity to do it, it's kind of a no-brainer because this loan is designed to come in at below-market rates. And just to give you guys some information on the timeline of this, you know, assuming we get the approval tonight, and that agreement gets signed, we will submit or help submit that application for you on the 17th. We've already had, our team has been out there at all four of those buildings Mr. Walden is referring to. And so basically, what the application process looks like is we have to do some calculations to show everything that we are applying for in terms of the lighting. The lighting, what we're recommending is the city move to LED lighting. LED lighting is the best technology you can get. You have better lighting around your buildings. And the energy savings are significant in comparison to some of the lighting that you have now, which, you know, holds T-12 lighting, T-8 lighting, solid older technology. And so, once we get that application in, the state usually takes around 60 to 90 days to make the allocations. And so we'll know exactly how much the state will be giving us for the loan. Probably early summer, I would say, or midsummer. And we plan on implementing that project today in the late summer, early fall. So any question you guys have for me right now?
Is this program restricted to just buildings?
No, it's, anything utility-wise that you pay for within the city is fair game.
So if we wanted to sometime look at the possibility of redoing our street lights, that type of thing, this program would also qualify for that?
Exactly.
You can do multiple submissions year to year, is that true?
Sorry, I couldn't hear that.
Yes, if we could, we could do multiple submissions year to year, or once you apply, are you out? are you out of the running for a while?
So basically the way it works, it's not, you know, you can apply as many times as you want. The way that the state allocates the money is based off a formula of how much the project will cost to implement, divided by the payback period. This loan requires a 10-year payback period. And so, you know, we've looked already at the city buildings. There's a lot of lighting stuff, you know, some mechanical and building envelope type stuff we can do. What we would probably do this phase around is, at least in phase one, get everything lighting done that we can. And the reason is because lighting pays back for itself quicker. And your mechanical stuff usually takes a bit longer for payback. So what we want to do now is, you know, get our most bang for the buck and get you guys as much as we can in this session. And then down the road, you know, like, so the gentleman's question about streetlights or mechanical problems, you know, let's move forward with that. But, you know, you're able to apply every round.
Do you have a feel for the entire scope of the cause? Four buildings?
Would you have any idea, Drew, roughly, what we might be looking at lighting for the four, have you gone that far yet, or?
In terms of the overall scope for the city?
Yeah.
So we're definitely looking at those four buildings you talked about, Mr. Walden. And then, you know, if you guys wanted to do citywide, that's, we certainly have the ability and bandwidth right now on, you know, April 6th to do that. You know, I spoke with my engineer, Greg Getty. He's the person to put these calculations together. And we have a pretty good idea just because we've worked in the area and have some utility data of what we can do to apply for. That's what you guys wanted to do, but I agree, might as well. Especially for lighting, you know, get as much as you can.
We've got decent data on the location of our streetlights that we can get, you know, to you if you want to try to include that in this round.
Yeah, absolutely. You know, whatever you can get, let's do that and get as much as we can.
I noticed we're already installing LED lights at our cost.
Right, this would just let it be paid for and, you know, funded through the energy savings.
I'm ready for the meltdown.
What's that?
For, I've contacted the engineer at meltdown and all the streetlights that are on highways under my knowledge.
So we have some state highways through that go through Salem that go down to, uh, take responsibility for. So we would just exclude those in the counts that we give you?
Take our counts.
Yes, so basically what we're taking is everything that is under your watch and your utility bills is fair game. But if it's another, you know, if it's something that's already covered by the state or you guys don't pay utility data on it, it would be better.
If that's an option, I'd like to see us move forward with that as well as if we can get the biggest bang for our buck, so to speak.
Can we include the Park and Rec lights, the parks, state parks? And Al Brown, because they're the old lights, they're a cost killer.
Question was asked, Drew, about including lighting at our parks. Could we include that as well?
Yep, again, anything that you guys pay for is fair game, you know, to help reduce your utility costs. So, you know, to, Mr. Walden, we started at those four buildings because I was the, the buildings at the time were the biggest needs, but that doesn't mean that we can, we don't, we just have to focus on those four buildings. We can expand it.
Well, we've got good data on the streetlights and the lighting at the parks, including locations and fixtures and so forth that we can get checked.
Perfect. So all I would need, obviously, a motion from the board tonight. But once that happens, Mr. Walden, just need that agreement back. And once we get that agreement, we can start getting the balls in motion. You know, we got, you know, fortunately, a week and a half to get our application submitted. So we'll get that going. And any information that you can get to me, you know, send that over or we can start putting that into our calculations.
I have a question. So it was said that if the energy savings weren't realized, then we wouldn't be liable for the loans, basically. So when we say the energy savings, we mean, so at the?
So.
Go ahead.
So basically, this legislation is, it's a state legislation called 8.231. That's the statute that allows this type of program. And the statute makes the entity you're contracting with, in this case McKinstry, it allows a 15-year payback period to, or for everything within that scope of work, to pay back for itself. And so McKinstry would be responsible for giving you guys support, whether that's annually, semiannually, whatever it may be. And we would show you those energy savings being realized. And you'll see that, obviously, in your utility bills. But to answer your question, let's say if, you know, this specific project was a $100,000 project, which means, you know, you break that over a 10-year period, that's $10,000 of savings a year. And in year one, we generated $9,000 of savings. Then McKinstry is responsible for writing the city of Salem a $1,000 check for the difference because we said we guaranteed those energy savings would be the benefit. And so it gives the city peace of mind knowing that they're going to get back everything that they invested, whether that's through the energy savings or whether that's through the contractor. Now, fortunately, that's very rare. Our engineers, you know, always, you know, 98% of the time come in and meet those energy savings or exceed those energy savings. And if we exceed those, that's the city's debt.
Okay, thank you.
Drew, is this a present value or future value calculation that you're doing to get your savings?
Say that again?
Is it a present value or a future value calculation for those savings?
I believe it's present value, but these calculations do adjust for future inflation. So I'm usually at a 2% to 3% mark.
Any other questions? Okay. Next item on the agenda is going to be introduction and reading of bills. Ms. Hubble, do you want to introduce bill number 3445?
Bill number 3445.
Mr. Walden?
Yes?
So tonight, are you guys still going to do the formal motion tonight, or?
That's where they're at right now.
Oh, that's right.
They'll take action on it, and based on that, we'll go from there.
Okay, perfect, all right, thanks.
An ordinance authorizing the mayor to execute a detailed engineering study EES agreement between the city of Salem, Missouri and the Intrudation LLC McKinstry for services to identify and implement energy conservation measures and selective capital improvements to facilities for building infrastructure and system enhancements. Whereas the Board of Alderman and the city of Salem, Missouri desire to make improvements to city-owned buildings that reduce utility consumption, maintenance costs, and operation costs. And whereas the city of Salem, Missouri requested proposals for qualified providers to perform a study to design and engineer interior and exterior lighting retrofit at all city buildings. And whereas McKinstry will assist in the coordination of rebates various responsibilities and documents to apply for a low-interest loan offered by the Department of Economic Development. Now therefore, be it ordained by the Board of Alderman and the city of Salem, Missouri as follows. Section 1, the Board of Alderman hereby approves the detailed engineering study agreement with McKinstry in the amount of up to $7,500 and authorize the mayor to execute the agreement and inform attached as exhibit 1. Section 2, this ordinance shall be in full force and effective from and after the debate of its passage and approval. Mayor, do you want the second reading by Patrick O'Malley?
I have a question before you.
I know what question is. Since the discussion, it's included more in the scope of this ordinance.
Yes.
I feel, correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Weber, but if you make a change to this ordinance, I have to read it in full twice.
Is that including the exhibit?
I mean?
Is that including the exhibit?
I need to review this for the lighting, the agreement. I just took off what this is for, the wording for it, up at here.
Drew, do you think the additional lighting we discussed could be done within the scope as it's presented in writing here before us?
Yes. The scope can grow once, basically what this is, is an agreement to do the study. And then we'll build, you know, how big the scope wants to be from that point. You can continue to do that in different phases down the road. But what this agreement is for is just to partner with McKinstry to build those scopes.
Says facilities for building infrastructure and system enhancements. I don't know if the lighting we discussed could be considered system enhancements or if we want to explicitly state these two items and then have Mary read it. If that would be agreeable to McKinstry, then we can still approve it tonight. Drew, would you be opposed if we had explicitly stated those two items and added that to the scope?
Nope, not at all.
So do we need to, since we have already read this one time, do we need to reread it a second time and vote on it as it stands? And then make the adjustments and vote on the new?
Sure. I think that you have to read, if you're going to amend it, since it's not been published at that point, I think that you just have to read the amended one twice. Because that's what you're publishing, the other parts are already been published.
So they have to vote down the current ordinance and then make a vote change to it? And then read it twice and four for the change, or?
That would be safer, I've thought about it.
I'll read the caption by the second reading. Bill number 3445, ordinance authorizing the mayor to execute a detailed engineering study EES agreement between the city of Salem, Missouri and McKinstry. Section LLC McKinstry for services to identify and implement energy conservation measures and selective capital improvements to facilities through building, infrastructure, and system enhancements. Has been brought to the board by the city of Salem, Missouri and approved by the city of City of David, April 2020.
Thank you. Do we have a motion on bill number 3445?
Disapproved and with amendments. Do you want to disapprove and with amendments?
So we can either fail due to lack of a motion or they can make a motion to approve it as is. Or they can make a motion to not approve it.
You can. Do you think they should just vote again as read? And make a motion for amendments to it? I read it again twice and four.
And it's what we did the last.
Okay. You can vote this down as read, make a motion to make amendments to it how you want them. Then I read that, you ordinance would give you amendments to it, and then you would vote on that.
So do we have a motion on bill number 3445?
Make a motion on bill 3445.
To approve it as written. Second.
I said I guess yes, and second, so we can vote.
Alderman Steele, second. Any other discussion?
Should we amend the motion so that we can add amendments?
Do you want to add the streetlights? So Alderman James?
Yes.
Alderman?
No. I'm bad.
Alderman Steele?
No.
Alderman Nash?
No.
Alderman Henderlager?
No.
Now do we have another motion for ordinance 3445 with amendments?
Just to?
Make a motion to bring it back to the floor because it's been voted down. Okay. And then make your amendments like you want it. So then read it as you've amended it.
We just need to add in the streetlights, if that's what you want to do.
First, there needs to be a motion to bring it back to the floor. I would like to make a motion to bring this back to the floor.
Second. Motion, the second, any discussion? Call for the vote, Alderman Steeleman? Alderman James?
Yes.
Alderman Henderlager?
Yes.
Alderman Nash?
Yes.
Now we have a motion to add in the streetlights.
Okay. If we were to add in Park and Rec lights, though?
Yes, and that as well.
Underlining or something?
Would you say underlining?
Under the second for as, could we say represented all city buildings, parks, and streetlights, and then continue on? Would that cover it?
So I make a motion to add under the second whereas lighting on all city buildings, streetlights, and parks are right.
Okay, we have a motion, we have a second. The second, any discussion? Here is then call for the vote, Alderman Steeleman?
Yes.
Alderman Henderlager?
Yes.
Alderman Nash? Alderman James? Okay.
Thank goodness it's small.
Yeah.
How are you, Drew? Bill number 3445, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to execute a detailed engineering study EES agreement between the city of Salem, Missouri and McKinstry Extension LLC McKinstry for services to identify and implement energy conservation measures and selective capital for the facilities through building, infrastructure, and system enhancement. Whereas the Board of Alderman and the city of Salem, Missouri desire to make improvements to city-owned buildings that reduce utility consumption, maintenance costs, and operation costs. And whereas the city of Salem, Missouri requested proposals for qualified providers to perform a study to design and engineer interior and exterior lighting retrofit at all city buildings, parks and rec, parks and street lighting. Whereas McKinstry will assist in the coordination of rebates various responsibilities and documents to apply for a low-interest loan offered by the Department of Economic Development. Now therefore, be it ordained by the Board of Alderman and the city of Salem, Missouri as follows. Section 1, the Board of Alderman hereby approves the detailed engineering study agreement with McKinstry in the amount of up to $7,500 and authorize the mayor to execute the agreement and inform attached as exhibit 1. Section 2, this ordinance shall be in full force and effective from and after debate of its passage and approval. Second reading. its passage and approval. Second reading, bill number thirty-four forty-five, and ordinance authorizing the mayor to execute a detailed engineering study, EES agreement, between the city of Salem, Missouri and McKinstry Ascension LLC and McKinstry for services to identify and implement energy conservation measures and selected capital improvements to facilities through building, infrastructure, and system enhancements. Whereas the Board of Alderman and the city of Salem, Missouri desire to make improvements to city-owned buildings that reduce utility consumption, maintenance costs, and operation costs. And whereas the city of Salem, Missouri requested proposals for qualified providers to perform a study to design and engineer interior and exterior lighting retrofit at all city buildings in parks and streetlights, whereas McKinstry will assist in the coordination of rebates, various responsibilities, and documents to apply for a low-interest loan offered by the Department of Economic Development. Now therefore, be it ordained by the Board of Alderman and the city of Salem, Missouri, as follows, section one, the Board of Alderman hereby approves the detailed engineering study agreement with McKinstry in the amount of up to seven-thousand-five-hundred dollars and authorize the mayor to execute the agreement in the form attached as exhibit one. Section two, this ordinance shall be in full force and effective from and after the debate of its passage and approval, passed by the Board of Alderman and the city of Salem, Missouri and approved by the mayor this day, February twenty-twenty.
Thank you. We have a motion on bill number thirty-four forty-five.
Take a motion to approve bill number thirty-four forty-five.
Do we have a second?
I have a second.
Second, any discussion? Harry Dunn will call for the vote, Alderman James?
Yes.
Alderman Henderlager?
Yes.
Alderman Steelman?
Yes.
Alderman Nash? Wonderful. Sorry for the confusion, everybody. Next item on the agenda is we need a motion on a second to go into closed session for litigation and personnel.
I want to make the motion we want a closed session for litigation and personnel.
Do we have a second? Any discussion? Harry Dunn call for the vote, Alderman Henderlager?
Yes.
Alderman Steelman?
Uh, yes.
Alderman James?
Yes.
Alderman Nash? Wonderful. Thank you all very much for coming.
Drew, I'll hold on with you tomorrow.
All right. You guys stay safe. Thanks for with me. Call in.
Thanks, Drew.